Go ahead and call the meeting to order. If you would, please rise. Pastor Earl from Crossroads Fellowship will lead us in prayer.
You guys will pray with me. Father, we're so thankful for this night. I think it's an opportunity to come together here at the council. God, I just pray that you go before us and prepare the hearts and the minds of everything that we're going to go over tonight. God, we're thankful for a city that loves you and focuses on you and begins these meetings with you. God, I just pray that you bless everything that we're going to do tonight and bless the plans for this city. God, we want this city to prosper and to do well, and I just pray that you help us to do that and that we honor you in all that we do. Jesus, amen. We pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. If you would, please stand up. Our scouts are going to present the call.
Audience attention. Scouts attention. Scouts forward and march. Please move the colors. Color guard humped. Color guard prepared to post the colors. Please show me your allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Color guard posted colors. Color guard reform. Color guard returned the post.
Y'all may be seated. Alright, guys, come back up here. I want to introduce you. I don't know if you don't get away with any.
Is it possible?
No. Andrew Hughes, if you would, raise your hand. There you go. Seth Chatton. Isaac Preeto. And Jacob Preeto. Thank y'all very much, and y'all did a fantastic job. Can they have a round of applause? If I can have Luis Lopez, please come forward. Every year, we give out this proclamation in its very special time. It says, "City of Odessa Proclamation. Whereas the annual sale of the Buddy Poppy's of the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States has officially been recognized and endorsed by governmental leaders since 1922, and the VFW Buddy Poppy's are assembled by disabled veterans, and the proceeds of this worthy fundraising campaign are used exclusively for the benefit of disabled and needy veterans and the widows and orphans of deceased veterans. The annual distribution of Buddy Poppy's by veterans of foreign wars is eloquently reflected in the desire to honor the dead by helping the living. Now therefore, I, David R. Turner, by the virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Odessa, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2017, VFW Buddy Poppy Month. Throughout the City of Odessa, I urge all citizens to remember the many gallant and brave men and women who have risked their lives in defense of our freedoms, which we as American citizens live in today."
I'm missing a very, very important ingredient of this day. My Buddy Poppy child is not here with me. I guess we got a day or date class. So please forgive me for being by myself today. I need their support. You know, the Buddy Poppy has been recognized to help those who get a lot and should be on World War I. And back in those days, we generated a bunch of veterans that needed help. World War II increased the number of veterans tremendously. Of course, the Korean War, the Vietnam War, had quite a few too. But lately, as more veterans there are reaching the ages of 60, 70, 80, and 90, or that's in a way. So I have the privilege and the honor as part of the honor guard to do a little charity service and review and bring dignity and respect to them. But like I said, the Buddy Poppy has been used to respond to help others. The mayor says. And we use this money, hopefully, to help the disabled veterans to come together and with different VA hospitals. And we also keep some of that money here to help for local disabled veterans and so forth. And we also have many programs that the VA staff have performed. Many things like our Loyalty Day, which is when we made the first who will honor our first responders or police or sheriff's department or DMT and our firemen, as well as the Gulf Coast parents who lost their loved ones, the warriors of our country. Today, I would like to recognize the people that had in the past helped us to do this. Here goes in 1950, a long time ago, when this became a big thing to help more veterans after World War II. We use a lot of starlets, you know, from Hollywood, many beautiful ladies. Such as the ones that I have over here. But I want you to know that even though we had this beautiful lady's help to promote the Buddy Poppy program, we had hundreds and hundreds of little girls who were, in my case, my belief, more beautiful than all starlets because they were six, eight years old, ten years old, thirteen years old. And they did help us raise the funds at each individual post. Now, I've had the pleasure, as I stood in front of Sam's Walmart, to meet people or ladies in their 60s, 70s, and 80s who came up to me and said, "I was a Buddy Poppy girl when, ma'am, when I was six, when I was eight." And you know what? As you stand and watching this beautiful lady in her 80s and 90s or 60s, I can visualize what they looked like when they were six, eight, and 10. And it gave me great pride and joy to be standing through a beautiful, this will be beautiful forever, because she volunteered her time as a child to help us, help our veterans. I hope that the City of Odessa will continue to be generous, aggressive, and by the Buddy Poppy and hope that many other volunteers, like Kenya, Nepal, and Ireland, they help us a lot to help us to be a tough, diverse form of work, to do more for veterans. And we do a lot more for veterans, believe me. We have so many programs that kind of already keep up with them. This probably why my little Buddy Poppy girl is not here today. She might be doing something else for the VA. But thank you very much for helping us. Thank you very much for allowing us to stand here with you, being recognized as a member of the Veterans for War and the other organization. I would thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Check that each one of you.
The group is standing hopefully in place at two almost the same high locations. I'll give you a little bit of pressure.
Thank you.
I'll get out of your way so you don't have that business.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I can have Renee Earls come forward, please. Renee Earls and friends. Every year, we have the honor of presenting proclamation for National Tourism Week, and it's that time of the year again. So let me read this proclamation. It says, "City of Odessa Proclamation. Whereas the travel and tourist industry continues to be a vital contributor to our community and to the entire state of Texas, and tourism plays a significant role in our lives as citizens, and we enjoy many attractions in our community and across Texas. Travel to and travel within provides significant economic benefits for the state, generating $67.5 billion spent directly by travelers and tax revenues of $4.7 billion. Texans reap the benefit of the industry, and Odessa provides 3,022 travel and tourism jobs and $10.4 million in local sales tax revenue. Travel and tourism substantially contributes to the economy and is a catalyst that moves the local economies forward, simultaneously support other sectors such as the arts, entertainment, government, real estate, construction, retail, and service firms. Now therefore, I, David R. Turner, by the virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Odessa, do hereby proclaim May 1st through 7th, 2017, National Tourism Week. Throughout the City of Odessa, I urge all citizens to realize the important role tourism plays in the economic well-being of our community and to recognize our Odessa Chamber of Commerce, Convention and Visitor Bureau staff for their outstanding performance in promoting our community. Thank you."
Thank you so much. Levana Lambert is our Convention and Visitors Bureau Director, and she was planning to be here, and she is coming from Lubbock. She's still on the road. So her staff is with us today, Hope, Melissa, and Carmen. We have some gifts to signify Odessa, and most importantly, we have an invitation for all of the citizens of Odessa to celebrate any attractions here we have in Odessa. While it's the CBB's job to bring people into Odessa, we also feel like it is very important for our own citizens to be aware of all of the wonderful attractions that we have. So on Saturday, May 6th, we hope you will come and join us for a bus tour of all of our different attractions. Any of the fees that belong to these attractions during the day will be waived, so it's a free opportunity for you to learn about Odessa and the wonderful attractions that we have here. So I hope all of the council will join us. I hope that the citizens will join us. There's information. You'll be seeing that out in the community, May 6th. Mark your calendar, 9:00, 10:00, and 11:00 a.m. Join us for a bus tour so that you too can find out what Odessa has to offer and be able to be proud of our community and help those that are coming into the community learn about us as well. So, thank you very much, and again, Levana sends her regrets.
Tell her to be careful.
This is a great idea. Please come join us so we can have busloads. We did this, I think, about 10 or 15 years ago, and it was a great hit, so we're bringing it back.
Okay, next, we have a presentation by Capstone Project. Jonavia Bolts and Autumn Gomez, if you would, please come forward. I apologize for butchering your name.
So these two beautiful ladies are students at New Tech, are actually seniors this year. And each year at New Tech, they do a Capstone Project where seniors are given the opportunity to work with nonprofits in the community and create a project that will help make the community healthier. And these two ladies sought us out as a council on alcohol and drug abuse because their focus is underage drinking and the problem that we're having in the community, and activities that would promote less underage drinking and more healthy activities in the community. So we worked with the girls, since we're the council on alcohol and drug abuse, and that's what we do. And these girls did a phenomenal job. They've spent the last three months working at the school. They have put together a video. However, the video is too big to share to my jump drive, so we can't show it. However, I'm going to email it to you, Ms. Norma, and if you would pass it on. They've done an excellent job, but they're going to explain the project and kind of what their ask is of you guys. So please welcome Jonavia Bolts and Autumn Gomez.
So during our Capstone Project, we held some focus groups with New Tech students. We interviewed them about our underage drinking, and we asked them a couple of questions, which was on the video. And we would ask them, like, questions, what they wanted in the community, and how often teens drink, and like, some questions like that. And Jonavia will talk more about the project. The reason why we chose this council, because I feel like it's really important, since we're the same age as these people who are drinking, I feel like it's important because we realize that it is an issue. And it's a major issue worldwide as well, because over 14,000 teens die each year due to substance abuse. And since we are the youth of Odessa, I feel like we can make a change since no one else will be our the city of Odessa, so we should be the ones speaking for them. Our video consisted of multiple interviews of students from New Tech dealing with their thoughts and their opinions. But since they can be here with us, we're going to speak for them. I would like to have more activities for our youth, because it's not a lot for them to do at all. And they're going out and ventilizing, they're drinking, they're doing very bad illegal behaviors. So I feel like we should have more activities for them to engage in, because if they have more activities that they feel like it's fun, then it'll cause the crime that they're going to decrease. So they'll have more activities. I feel like schools should promote more often than they do, because not a lot of people come to schools and talk about these issues. So if we can all come together and see if it could be a certain group of people to talk to these students, then maybe they'll have a bigger chance of understanding that this is an issue and that they do have people who care for them and that is there for them.
That's fantastic. Any questions, Your Council?
Have you put it out there on YouTube?
No, sir.
Okay.
Well, we are in the process of making flyers and like a PSA if we can, so they can know that this is a thing that we're trying to do. Unfortunately, we're seniors, so we won't be in Odessa for long, but I would love to make a mark in my city and make people know that I do care for Odessa and that I did do this for us.
That's fantastic. We commend you for doing that.
Very impressive.
One of our coalition goals in working with them and to create this sustainability so that this can continue is after the focus groups and everything have been released, we're going to go out into the for-profit world where kids actually enjoy going, like synergy and roller skating and things like that, to see if we can get some massive discounts or free nights for these specific teenagers to do, plug in a drug-free message, bring that education to them, as well as maybe work with the workforce to get jobs for these teenagers so that there are actual avenues that these kids can turn to. So that's a task that our coalition is going to take on, because again, it's all about creating a healthier Ector County. So their work is, they've started the work, but we are going to continue the work long after they've left, and hopefully some more students will come our way and help.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, so thank you.
You young ladies have left a mark, and you will have somebody that will come up and step in your shoes and probably ask you questions about what you did. But you have left your mark. Don't leave anything that you had. Those kind of things don't, they don't go unnoticed by the kids you go to school with and kids that are coming up. They do notice that.
Your leader's all already, and you will continue in that. And let me ask you one question. In the video that we're going to be receiving, in that, will we learn the activities that our youth are wanting us to help them provide?
Yes, ma'am. We asked them what they'd like to do and what they would like to see in Odessa that they haven't seen yet. And most of them were, they just wanted more movie nights where they didn't have to pay so much, because they said that a lot of things they do is really expensive. So they want less expensive activities that they can do without spending so much money.
What other things, such as what?
They also want more events. Like, a lot of our kids at our school are art students, so they want maybe like an event or a night where it's multiple artists that have, like, paintings and stuff that they can view. They want a night where it's just them just having fun, food, drinks, or maybe like how they do movies at the park. They just want a night away from all the stuff that they go through at home.
That's fantastic. Any more questions?
Very impressive. Thank you so much.
And I've got something to say thank you from the council. We just got here, so you're from first.
Plus, we need them to come back. She said she was leaving. You gotta come back.
Okay, next, we move to the consent agenda. I believe there's one we want to pull off.
Yes, I would like to remove Dean, I'd like to table Dean.
Okay, we have a motion to table Dean. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
It's four to one. Next, we move to consent agenda to approve the remaining items. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have four motions. A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next, we move to other council actions and resolutions. Consider applying for TechDOT Transportation Alternative Set Aside Program. Mr. Felt.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Sherri Bailey with Planning and myself are working on a project together. This is a new program through TechDOT. It's, they're calling it Set Aside Program. It's basically focusing on alternative modes of transportation, i.e. bicycles, walking. What we're wanting to do is submit an application for the program. We've been working on a project. Basically, we're talking about two phases of the project. What we're trying to submit is the first phase. It would include some existing bike routes we have in town, some existing bike lanes. We're proposing to add additional bike routes on the street, as well as what's shown in red is using the Encore easement that runs basically parallel to Dixie from Eighth Street North. And what all of this is, and jump in anytime if I'm talking too much. Basically, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to bring all parts of town, we're focusing on downtown. So, or if you live downtown, we're going out. But we've hit some high points around town, such as Central Park, Magic Trail, UTBB. We're trying to get more people out and about on the roads, using bicycles or walking. What we're trying to do is, we're kind of on a rushed schedule. We have to submit the project to TechDOT by May 22nd, which includes this resolution of support by the City of Odessa. And do you want to go into a little bit about the program itself?
Certainly. As House said, this is a new program. It's a transportation set aside program. It's funded for three years, 2017 through 2020. There is $52 million for cities of 200,000 or less in the state of Texas. And we have been told that you can only apply for up to $2.5 million. So we have Phase 1, and then we are proposing, whoops, Phase 2, which would be an additional section of the Encore easement and some other on-street and bike lanes. We are proposing that particularly on the Encore easement that we construct, it's a little over a mile long, a 12-foot-wide concrete path that's six inches thick with two shoulders that are two foot wide, that would carry people from, as House indicated, from the north into the downtown area. The areas in south Odessa, east-west, and then further north would also be included as far as design concept, colored markings, signage, education indicating where the bike trails are, where the bike route is. We're also looking at putting up shade structures, benches, bike racks, trash cans, and some specific lighting for that Encore easement that is solar lighting both high and the low baller lighting that will light the path for evening riding. Part of our project is also coming up with a logo, a design, and a color that will be easily recognized across the city as part of the bike trail area that we can enhance, that we can put out brochures, education materials, and develop that. And over the next 10 to 15 years, really develop in Odessa a bright bike trail system that really enhances this community.
Let me hit on funding real quick. Something I want to stress on this new program is it is a reimbursement program, meaning the city would have to upfront the cost of the project and then get reimbursed as it's constructed. There is a 20% local match required of this program, and up on the screen, you see that the local match- see that the local match is four hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. And if the city does the construction plans and gets that ready, we can apply approximately that one hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars as part of our twenty percent match, which would reduce that four twenty-four cost. So, oh, sure, now. Now I can read it.
No, I was trying to keep it small.
So that is the funding aspects, and what we're requesting of you tonight is that resolution is needed for the application to Tech Dot showing local support of the City of Odessa. And we're here to answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Certainly.
Second.
Got a motion and second? Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you both very much for all your hard work.
Thank you for finding us, Grant. They're not easy to find.
Okay.
Move it with table number two.
Okay, we have a motion to table number two. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so it's three to two with this table. Number three, Copper Key Realty Facade and Infrastructure Grants.
Uh-oh.
Michael.
Sherry turned it off, I think. Sherry did it.
It's all her fault.
Turn it on.
Come on, boy.
Oh, that's how you turn it on, huh? Okay.
We do without Michael.
The first one.
First one?
Yes.
Michael fixes it for everyone?
He's always an tech expert. So.
Would call me next week. Yeah, sometimes, Mike.
Remember when you were children and your parents played the music machine for you and talked about Bee Station?
It's a music machine.
Beatles and Lols.
Michael. All right, back to the program.
Okay. Thank you for having us this evening. We are presenting the Downtown Facade Improvement Program with Copper Key Realty. With me is John Hirsch, the owner of Copper Key, to answer any questions you may have. Copper Key Realty is located at five twenty-one North Grant Avenue. It's a little dark, but that picture is what the building was before improvements were made. Here's a rendering of what the facade will look like without color. The business investment, we can move to the next slide, it shows more in depth. Business investment, we five thousand five hundred fifty, and they are requesting an amount of twenty thousand to cover new windows and decorative stucco. They are relocating their main offices to downtown. They've already purchased the building and have already started improvements on that building. This new location also created new jobs in downtown. They expect a six-month completion of the agreement, and it underestimates about three or four months to complete that. They received the Design Committee approval on March twenty-fourth and the ODC approval on April thirteenth. Are there any questions?
Just a question on your signage. I know currently you have a vinyl sign up there. Is that signage going to be changed?
Totally, it's going to be changed. We're going to do some block lettering to go through and actually light from our end up, so the whole front of the building lights up with LED lighting.
That's great.
And we've also added the gift shop there. It's not just a real estate company, so we have helped with the walkability and some retail in the area, and with the gift shop, and also gift shop and home decor.
Any question?
What's the total amount of, because I was looking at the, your budget, and it shows you're going to do a lot more work than that, right? Or?
That's just, that's just for the facade.
Yeah. What's your total project cost?
On infrastructure?
Yeah.
Infrastructure is fifty thousand five hundred twenty.
Thank you for investing in downtown. Thank you for coming downtown.
The facade, we had to replace all the glass. It was single paint. It was either hot or cold.
It was dark.
And dark, it was very dark. You couldn't see them see the products. And that's been taken care of. We're redoing the stucco in the front. And then on the infrastructure, the roof, we keep patching and patching. We need a new roof. And then heaters and air conditioners are horrible shape, and we've already done a lot of the work.
Johnny mentioned something about Tucoe, was this to get it to Coke also on the roof and the air conditioner?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Do we have a motion to pass the facade group?
Second.
We have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now we're going for the infrastructure grant.
And we certainly do appreciate you moving downtown. Thank you.
I like downtown.
We do, too. Yes. So here is the infrastructure program with Copper Key Realty. Again, here is their location at five twenty-one North Grant. Here's just a picture of the damage that's been caused by the roof leaks inside. So more on the business investment, they will be investing five thousand four hundred thirty-four.
Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand, thank you. And they will be requesting an infrastructure grant of fifty thousand five hundred twenty with a total investment of a hundred thousand nine hundred fifty-four and seventy-two cents. Here is more in depth of what they'll be doing. As you can see on their business investment, all the work they'll be doing, they'll be updating the awning, they'll also be including those new windows, emergency exit lights. They will be requesting to be reimbursed for the new roof and the new HVAC unit, which is supported by the IPMC codes and the IMC and ICC codes. This is again a relocation of main offices. The infrastructure agreement is one-year completion. The downtown Odessa Design Committee approved this on March twenty-fourth and ODC on April thirteenth. Are there any questions?
Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Aye.
Motion and a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Under miscellaneous, we do not have any appointments to boards or officers, so we will move to citizens' comments for non-agenda items. If you have any. Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
A move.
A motion and a second. Three motions. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We are adjourned.